Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out this evening. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the law of the world.
Could you call a roll for us, please? Dr. Allen Stuck?
Present.
Dr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Yeah.
Ms. Minji?
Here.
Mr. Sinto?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Pinebrink?
Here, thank you.
First item is Public Session. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. At the end of three minutes, we'll make some sort of disruptive noise to get you to finish up, okay? First person on the list is Sharon Pennock.
And I apologize because as I was leaving, I was printing out the shortened version of this, so I might get a little over three minutes, but I'm hoping since I'm the only one here, it's not going to be an issue. And therefore, I'm reading off my screen. Okay. Hello, my name is Sharon Pennock. I live at 325 David Drive in Haverford. As April is commonly referred to as Autism Awareness Month, and many of our schools are celebrating it, I wanted to join you tonight to share the perspective of a friend of mine who is autistic herself and wants to let us know how to better, let us know better ways to accept and support the autistic people in our community. To be totally honest, a few years ago, I myself also had no idea that April was such a difficult month for the very people it is supposed to be supporting. There's an important saying in the broad disability community, which is "Nothing about us without us." Once I started actively listening, I learned so much, and now I try to amplify the voices and ideas of those who are so often ignored or left to the sidelines while others are speaking over them. So instead of telling you my perspective, I'd like to read you what Nadine wanted to share using her own words. Autism. I don't think that word means what you think it means. I don't blame you, though, because you've likely only seen it portrayed in one light, a blue light, to be specific. This message is about Autism Awareness Month, but I feel like I need to share with you some personal details so you'll understand where I'm coming from. Thank you for bearing with me. I'll try to keep it brief. I am an autistic woman. At five years old, I openly flapped my hands, hummed constantly, and spent hours pacing or riding swings because it helped me think. When I was upset, I sometimes slapped myself in the face. I was upset a lot because people did not treat me kindly. They tried to make me stop flapping and humming and swinging, even though my body needed to do those things. I developed anxiety, then OCD, because I felt so powerless. Sometimes I was physically restrained or locked in a closet for not behaving like other children. The kids who did fit in, the normal ones, sometimes bullied me very badly, calling me crazy, weird, and I'll say the R-word. Eventually, I developed PTSD. People blamed my trauma responses, the ones that they had created themselves, on my behaviors and developmental differences. Despite all of this, somehow, I learned to hide my autistic behaviors and cope, although it took a great deal out of me, and I developed depression and insomnia. I'm going to try to keep this brief. I'm going to shorten her words and say that she went on to pass, which means people didn't know that she was autistic. She kind of is masking, and it takes a lot out of her. And she eventually, although she earned her degree to work in the legal field, she eventually had to stop doing it because it was too, she was too traumatized from the previous years and was too badly triggered in the work that she was doing. So on the outside, she looked very well-educated and very capable, but inside, switching back to her voice, I struggled daily and was unable to pay my bills. I was nearly evicted more than once. I'm not telling you this story because I want your pity. You can keep that. Please do as a matter of fact. What I want you to know is that there are others like me. There is an entire community of autistic adults out there, and many of us have been fundamentally misunderstood, underestimated, or undersupportive throughout our lives. Many of us are activists. Some people say we are not like them or not like their children, that we are all so high-functioning that we aren't even autistic or should be representing their voices. Those people are trying to silence us because we're saying things that are uncomfortable and that they don't want to hear. I'm going to try. They under, we communicate with one another, we support one another, we have our own culture, and our culture is a diverse one. Do you know the names DJ Savarice, Amy Sequenzia, Larry Bissonnet, Terry Thresher, or Carly Fleishman? They are poets, documentary makers, artists, and autistic activists. They create beautiful things and share powerful messages. They fight for dignity and equality and acceptance. None of them is able to communicate verbally. All of them were once written off as low-functioning. What does this have to do with Autism Awareness Month? I ask you to be aware of what messages you send to us and about us. Every April, we are inundated with stories that portray us as a tragedy, an epidemic, and a burden to our families and to society as a whole. Normal kids get on the news for asking us to the prom. We are no longer people but puzzle pieces. We have become the equivalent of a ribbon, a cause, a good deed. Our dignity is taken away for 30 days every year, and money is often raised from an organization whose budget allocates less than 2% on actually helping autistic people. An organization with a long history of openly attacking autistic people who dared to say that they did not speak for them. That same organization that funds eugenic research and uses fear to raise money. This year, however, has been different in some places. I am 50 years old now, and I am married with two beautiful sons who, like me, are autistic but who are also unique individuals. Last year, my son, who does not speak fluently, came home with a note asking him to dress in blue and wear a puzzle ribbon. I lost my ability to speak because I was so upset, but I eventually regained it, and I used my voice and sat down to explain to his school why that was devaluing. This year, his school is celebrating Autism Acceptance Month, and my younger son's school is as well. They are talking about neurodiversity. They are giving us back the dignity we lose every April. I ask you to have the courage and compassion to follow their example. If you wish to support a nationally-recognized and highly-respected organization started by autistic people and run by autistic people for autistic people, please support the Autistic Self Advocacy Network, based in Washington, DC. Please don't light up blue or turn people into puzzle pieces. Please talk to autistic adults and teens, learn about neurodiversity, and teach the history of the disability rights movement. Make the world your students inherit inclusive and accessible, and many of the challenges autistic people face will vanish. Thank you. Nadine Silber Esquire. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
And I have copies of her speech that I can hand out at the end of the meeting. Is that good? Or now?
Our second speaker is Rich McGlorry.
I really don't know if I can speak after that speech, but I have been on, I am the grandfather of an autistic child. And although I passed all the tests to get my principal certificate on autism, I never knew what autism was until I lived with it. And where I learned the most about autism is from listening to other parents and autistic people, and it's just a fascinating world for me, which is probably going to be what I will dedicate the rest of my professional life to. And that brings me, just to finish up on what I was speaking about the other day, one thing we have to realize, the latest CDC, the Center for Disease Control Study, is that one in 40 children, by parental reports, were found to be autistic. These kids are coming to our schools. Autism Speaks still says, from their latest study, one in 59. When I first started four years ago, it was one in 68. These kids are going to be in our schools. They are all unique kids, and the binding factor is their social anxiety that they go through and their strange behaviors because of that. And every parent of an autistic child seeks the best therapy, the best school setting, the best school to put them in, and they search, and they search, and they search. I can't tell you how many different schools I have visited and looked on the Internet. Last week, I visited Timothy School because we were deciding whether to put Timmy Johnny in the Timothy School or leave him where he is. My belief is that autistic children need to be in regular schools and have as much exposure to typically developing children for their neurons in their brains to develop specially. That opinion is not going away. Whether my son decides to go to send Johnny to Timothy School or not is his final decision, and it should be every parent's final decision because it is a life-determining decision that we make. Many autistic children are delayed linguistically. My little Johnny is just now learning to speak, largely because of where he is and what he gets in Cooperstown Elementary School. Do I think it is the best program in the world? All great programs are developed year after year after year after year. Ms. Minji started the program, right? And we build on it. You know, I've made some comments about it. Whether a child becomes verbal, whether they are a speaking adult that can bust the standardized test and get scholarships, or whether they are non-verbal, or whether they're late talking, is largely dependent on what we do in our schools. There is no magic pixie dust out there. Chop doesn't have a cure for it. Nobody does. The Timothy School doesn't have a cure for it. It is learned word by word, expression by expression, experience by experience. One thing that autistic children do is they remember forever how we make them feel and what we do with them. It's our collective responsibility to design our programs to feed, to meet the needs of our children. It is not the other way around. And that is our collective responsibility. And like many autistic parents, we become advocates for not just our children, but all autistic children. It's a unique world that they live in, and it's our responsibility to meet their needs. And it's not just a legal responsibility, as we have a fine lawyer here. It's a moral responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ellen Fisher.
Hi, I'm Ellen Fisher, and I am a school board candidate. Also, I am a board member of the Education Foundation, and I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the Twilight Run, which is our only fundraiser for the year this year. And as all of you are aware, obviously, it's harder and harder to fund innovative programming for the district, and the Ed Foundation is the place where that money comes from. So we have programs like Paws for Reading where we take, we give an opportunity, we bring in dogs to listen to children reading. We funded the television station. There's lots of other innovative things that we funded. We want to make sure that that money is coming in so we can spend it back on the district. I don't want to be outdone every week by Rich McGlorry's handouts, so I am handing out our sponsorship letter to the board. We have some contributions that have come in from the board, but it's really important that everyone not only comes, you know, supports it financially, but it'd be great if you could come to the 5K run. It's April 27th. You do not have to run. You can walk. You don't even have to walk. You can just register, and you'll get a tag that gives you a free pass, all kinds of free things for a party on the town, so it really is a nice community event to be a part of. We really need your help this year. We want to be able to fund more and more programs and all kinds of things, and want you to continue to submit grants to the Ed Foundation. I also wanted to tell you about one of our students. Christopher Choir is a middle school student in seventh grade, and he will be pitching a panel of investors at the Young Entrepreneurs Academy Investor Panel Event on April 10th. His business is a home concierge service, so he would do chores in the Haverford area. He is in the Manoa School region, so if anybody needs help, you'll have an opportunity to hire him. But it's a really great event, and he, hopefully, he'll get money to start his business. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak who did not sign up? Thank you all. Our next item is our student reps. Tonight, we have Finn Schwartz and Shelby Huffnell.
Hello, my name is Finn Schwartz. The school year is flying by. Friday, April 5th, is the final day of the third marking period. Grades will be posted on Power School on Friday, April 12th. Our spring sports season began on Monday, April 1st. All of our teams had either a game or meet this week and are happy to be outside competing. Coaches and student athletes are looking forward to successful seasons. We are looking forward to spring break on April 17th, 18th, and 19th, and no school for students due for a Teacher in Service Day on April 22nd. Thank you for having me present. Have a good evening.
Hello, school board, and thank you for having me. Spring break is fastly approaching, two weeks from now, and we are more than happy at the high school to take any break, no matter how small. This Monday, all the juniors at the high school traveled to nearby colleges to hopefully narrow their college search through the annual college road trip. There are 12 options included, local colleges such as St. Joe's University, U Sciences, or Villanova, as well as some other more further-away colleges such as Princeton or Franklin and Marshall. Tomorrow morning, the chorus leaves for Pittsburgh bright and early at 5:00 AM. We will perform as a special exhibition for the Eastern NAFME Conference, or National Association for Music Education, under the conduction of our favorite Miss Marcia Corps. While in the city, we will also be sure to enjoy the sights and amenities before we return Sunday night. Next Thursday, Student Senate is hosting the Red Cross for our spring blood drive, open to all faculty and available students. We currently have 118 donors signed up and hope to fill more spots as the day gets closer with signups being held every day at lunch. Junior prom tickets were on sale all this week, with the event fastly approaching on the 26th of April, the Friday after we get back from spring break. The event will be hosted at Drexel Brook Special Events Center as always, and will be a fun event for the whole grade to enjoy with good music, dancing, outfits, and food. Haverford's Finest Competition is being held at the high school next Friday night at 6:30 in the auditorium. Our competitors this year are Shane Burke, Dylan Tate, Malcolm Wilson, Andrew Borby, Allison Durfee, Sam Eil, Ethan Langenow, Will Gardner, Nassim Said, and Liam McKay. We cannot wait to find out who will win this year's Haverford's Finest 2019 title. Congratulations to Mr. Hart and the Wind Ensemble Band, who placed a superior rating for sight-reading and performance at the PMEA Band Competition at Radnor High School, the highest honor. The Fifth Annual Trent Stettler Day will be hosted at the high school football field on the 13th. This day celebrates the life of Trent Stettler, and all proceeds go to the Trent Stettler Memorial Fund for mental health awareness, as well as scholarships for Haverford High School varsity lacrosse players. The event invites everyone from the community to come out and enjoy lacrosse, like Trent did, with lacrosse skills games and clinics, as well as food trucks, a fun zone, and face painting. Tickets will be sold at the entrance, and all community members are encouraged to come out and have some fun on the turf. Last Saturday, the tracks teams hosted the Haverford Invitational. Twenty-three schools and 45 boys and girls teams participated. April 13th, our girls will host the Delco Relays, and the esteemed Penn Relays are coming up the week of April 25th through the 27th. Softball is off to a strong start with a 3-1 league record, defeating Upper Darby in Garnet Valley. Boys volleyball is currently 3-0 and facing tough Christopher Dock tonight. We will be hosting their 14-team tournament on April 13th in the gymnasium, and that is all for now, and thank you, as always, for allowing me to report to you all the goings-on at my school.
Thank you both. Onto our conference agenda. First item is celebrating Autism Awareness Month.
The board members also received this evening recognition of Autism Awareness Month, prepared by children in our newly-created autistic support class at the middle school.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Rushee, members of the school board. First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Pennock and Mr. McGlorry for their powerful messages tonight. Thank you very much. Each year, April is considered World Autism Awareness Month. The kickoff begins with a celebration on April 2nd, with the goal of speaking, spreading awareness about Autism Spectrum Disorder, a developmental disorder which impairs the communication and social interaction skills of an individual. Back in 2008, April 2nd was announced as the World Autism Awareness Day by the United Nations General Assembly. The resolution was passed in council on November 1st of 2007 and adopted on the 18th of December of 2007. World Autism Awareness Day is one of the seven health-based days recognized by the United Nations. I'd like to share some statistics with you from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention regarding the prevalence of autism in the student population. As Mr. McGlorry said, about 1 in 59 children has been identified with Autism Spectrum Disorder, according to estimates from CDC's Autism and Developmental Disability Monitoring Network. ASDs reported occur in all racial, ethnic, and socionomic groups. An estimated 1/3 of people with autism are non-verbal. Thirty-one percent of children with autistic spectrum disorder have an intellectual disability with significant challenges in daily functioning. 25% are in the borderline range. Nearly 28% of eight-year-olds with ASD have self-injurious behaviors. At this time, oh, I have it, this is right, yeah. At this time, I'm sorry. I'm going, I'd like to review the history of our autistic support program here in the Haverford School District. Mrs. Minji, I'm going to try to make sure I get this right. I had people in my professional, or in people services that I relied on, very, very good people, but if I get it wrong, you're going to let me, no, right? Okay? Prior to the 2012, 2013 school year, the district did not have an autistic support program operating in any of the buildings. Students who were identified with ASD were provided services through the learning support and/or emotional support programs in the district, or they were placed in out-of-district placements programs to meet their needs. At the end of the 2010, 2011 school year, a cohort of students with autism were identified, and plans were developed to create a program within the district to meet their needs. The district reached out to the Elwin Institute and the Delaware County Intermediate Unit to begin training and support in order to prepare and provide supports and services to our autistic support population. So in September of 2012, our first autistic support program was opened. The district continued to partner with the Elwin Institute and the DCIU for behavioral support, staff development, and curriculum resources, as a second classroom was opened at Manoa in 2014. In the 2015, 2016 school year, the autistic support classes were moved to Cooperstown Elementary School. In this current school year, we have added another elementary autistic support program and opened an autistic support class at the middle school. This brings a total of four autistic support classes in the Haverford District, providing services to our students with autism, and we are anticipating a need for an additional class at the elementary level for next year. In the near future, we will begin to have discussions regarding a high school program and a possible need for another middle school program based on the numbers of students being identified with Autism Spectrum Disorder. To celebrate World Autism Awareness Month, our schools are encouraging students and staff to wear blue on Fridays. In addition, here are some examples of activities that have been conducted in the district. At Cooperstown Elementary School, the fifth-grade student council is selecting books for every homeroom teacher to read to their students to learn about autism. Books were pre-selected by our autistic support teachers. Fifth-grade students are joining the autistic support classes at their recess every Friday as a buddy program so that their recess is more social. Every student colored a puzzle piece that we will turn into a huge puzzle and display in the Cooperstown Elementary Library. At the middle school, Kalen Bennett, a person with autism, spoke to many of our students in the district. Kalen aims to be the first NCAA, first player in basketball in NCAA with autism. He has a very powerful message for our students.
I don't want you to be trying to be, you can't do that. And when I walked across that stage, I saw my mom's face, and I had this, she was, I was freezing, I was seeing everybody smiling and happy, everybody standing, smiling, I had to stick up, we could do this, we could do this. Off the top of my head, I'm like, Division 1 scholarship, we can stay, let's do what I mean. And I'm thinking, I know I can't do this, because I can do it all the time, but I just want to leave y'all with something. Never let anybody tell you what you can't do. You might not be able to write, you might not be able to write in the beginning, but you can share right, you can share right at the end of the story. So, I just want y'all to know, you feel me, y'all, you're like, you're staying in school, you know, I ain't seen, I know I'm kidding, too. Everybody, keep doing what y'all want, keep supporting each other, keep being a positive community, everybody in here, I love y'all, thank y'all so much, I'm gonna be here. Oh, sorry. I had to skate.
As we recognize that autism spectrum disorders are prevalent all around the world, let's pledge that no one, including those living with autism and other disorders, is left behind. Finally, I'd like to thank Mrs. Deacon for putting this wonderful presentation together. Thank you. Any questions?
I would first like to say that your timeline was excellent. Great job. I also would like to say thank you to Mr. McGlorry, who keeps giving me credit for something that I was merely a team member of. I was lucky enough to be the elementary coordinator in special education at the time when Dr. Bill Kilebaugh, Judy Quinzel, and I decided that, and a lot of it had to do with parents requesting programming for their children, decided that it was time to bring these children to our schools. So I was just merely part of a team, and I will give almost all of the credit, including today, to the teachers and the instructional assistants that work with the teachers. They have trained themselves, they have learned, they work hard, and they truly are magnificent. So we're very lucky in this district.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. McGlorry.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Neil.
There is actually a second item on the conference agenda. At our last meeting, we talked about bringing back the two cyber charter resolutions this meeting for discussion, so they're in the packet. By way of history, I think the Pennsylvania's Charter School Law is, I believe, 21 years old at this point. When that law was passed, nobody envisioned cyber charters. I can tell you that K-12 Incorporated, which is a national company that's a major player in this arena, before there was a cyber charter law in Pennsylvania, used to sell their curriculum to homeschool parents for $1,000. What are we paying this year for a regular ed student?
For a regular ed student, for the charter school? 13, 13,000?
Over 12,000. And our special ed rate?
30, 30.
34,000. So, $1,000, 13,000, 30,000. K-12 Incorporated and Connections, Commonwealth Connections, which is the other large national provider, actually wrote, they wrote the law that enacted cyber charters in the state, and they lobbied heavily to get that cyber charters in the state, and they lobbied heavily to get that law enacted, and they give generously to legislators who support that legislation. Unlike brick-and-mortar charters where a school board has to actually authorize a charter, and when you authorize a charter, you're saying, "We understand that our tax dollars that we're collecting from our neighbors are going to be going to this alternate means of delivering an education." With cyber charters, that's not the case. No, none of the existing cyber charters were ever authorized by a school board. And what happens is that the money just leaves, and nothing comes back. We get, we get no information about the student's performance. I, I believe we don't even get attendance information unless they're truant. Is that correct? So there's, there's really not much in the way of accountability. A large national study that was funded in part by a national charter advocacy group was, found that attending a cyber charter, on average, was equivalent to losing 180 days a year in math and 70 days a year in language arts. And we sit at our board meetings, for those of you who really enjoy the part of the meeting where we read long strings of numbers and say that we're paying them, we're authorizing payments to several of these cyber charter schools, and we have been for years, and we have virtually no control over that. If we, if we voted not to approve those payments, they would simply draft our, our state subsidy. That's the way the law works. So what we have before the board tonight are two, two resolutions, which we distributed to the board at the last meeting, and they're in the packet this evening for further discussion, and they're actually both on our business agenda for a vote. So I'll open it up to the board and happy to hear what you have to say.
So what does this mean for Haverford? We have an online school.
Correct.
We're enrolling more students every year, so we're experiencing a reduced number of students applying for cyber, the cyber charter tuition reimbursement. You know, what do, what do those numbers look like here?
We could, well, the numbers you can see from the 14, 15 year to the current school year, 18, 19, you can see what has, what has been paid there. So one might look at that and say, "You're not reducing anything," because those numbers are pretty consistent. We would like to think that instead of reducing them, we are able to keep more of our students instead of having them choose that as, as a particular option. By comparison to some of our neighboring districts, this may not, at first glance, seem like a lot of money, but I'm gonna tell you right now, any building principal or department head would love to have another $250,000 to spend, you know, on the students, teachers with, you know, with whom they work. So while it pales in comparison to some of the neighboring school districts, it's still a lot of money to us.
Would there be any additional cost to us if however many students who are going to cyber charter joined our Haverford cyber char, or Haverford Online, or whatever we call it?
Any additional cost?
Right, like, is, like, I mean, let's say every single one of them came back, would there, there would be a cost, though, to them being a part of this program, to a degree?
To a degree, yeah. It would depend on the amount of time that they would, like, our program is a blended, really is a blended program that offers the option, you could be in school, in a classroom, also taking some things online. So it would, a lot of that would depend. I mean, I'd like to say it's not gonna have that much of a, you know, much of a difference.
Sure.
Depending on what people would choose to do. Particularly at the high school level, it's not gonna make that much of a difference, you know, putting the kids into classes that already exist.
Okay, thanks.
Are our neighboring districts also, do you know if any of the neighboring districts that are around us are also looking at the same resolution, the number similar? Okay. So we're in lockstep with them in terms of our, looking at this right now?
Yeah. In terms of the, the resolution supporting Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526, you know, we're fortunate because Senator Leach, Representative Vitale, and Representative Zabel have all signed on as cosponsors for that respective legislation. I can tell you also, House Bill 526 is starting to accumulate cosponsors every day, seeing one or two more, so that's a good thing. I think that school boards are reaching out to their elected folks in Harrisburg and trying to make sure that they have an understanding of what it's costing us and how, you know, we have no, how we get nothing back. And apparently, the, on average, the kids aren't, aren't being educated.
Have any other states successfully been able to push something through? Like, have any other states been able to stop the national big cyber charters?
I know that there, there have been a number of suggestions for how to improve cyber charters. You know, one certainly is to take a better look at who's, what students are suitable candidates for cyber charters. If you have a student who's a self-starter and very motivated and, and self-disciplined, then it's probably a great idea. But to just offer it as a, as a choice to students who are already having a tough time seems to be a prescription for what we're seeing.
So there's an interesting article in, it's from Keystone Crossroads that was published February 13th. They're associated with WHYY, it's February 13th of this past year. It's called "The Death of Cyber Charter Schools in PA?" So I think for anyone who's interested in kind of reading both sides of this, that is helpful. It seems that, so the, the cyber charter world is coming at this and saying, "Well, any, any attempts to, you know, stave off cyber charter, private cyber charter schools, that's really infringing on school choice." But I think it's really important for us as taxpayers, we should have a choice in how our tax dollars are spent to educate the children in our district. And I think this is a step in that direction.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, well, these are both on the business agenda.
Yes.
We'll get to them shortly. Item number five, and this is for information purposes only, Secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes, proof of publication as it relates to the district-wide concrete repair bid advertising. Item number six, I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the March 21st, 2019 Regular Public Board Meeting. Move. Second. Moved in second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to highlight that the student reports were added to the minute content, and I always appreciate those. They're always a highlight of the meeting, so I'm glad they made it into the official record.
Great, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, I'll accept a motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $65,522.82. Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please? Dr. Alan Stuck?
Aye.
Dr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Sinto?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, I'll accept a motion to approve disbursements from the following fund as listed, General Fund, $3,906,994.16.
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, I'll accept a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Special Education Intergovernmental Funding and Service Agreement with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit in the amount of $961,920.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Could someone speak to the services that are provided through this?
Neil, I mean, there, we get a variety of services. It could be speech and language.
Speech, language, occupational therapy. There's also programs that we send students to, to meet their needs in, for cognitive disabilities, life skills. There's, I mean, there's a, I can-
And in those placements, they can be receiving the-
The services, yeah.
-speech and the language.
Physical therapy, occupational therapy, behavioral specialist. There's a lot of things we work with.
And I understand that this is a, a contract and a fee that is a allocation for the proportion of our students-
Our students.
...within the county services.
Yes, right.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, I'll accept a motion to approve the lease agreement with the Greater Philadelphia YMCA for 2019 Summer Camp Program at Haverford Middle School. Grand total for usage is $50,350.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, I'll accept a motion to approve the Plan Con K documents from PDE associated with general obligation bonds, Series 2019, and authorize proper officers of the board to execute these documents.
Moved. Seconded.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I think it would be helpful to note that we learned that this is a paperwork process that allows us to continue to receive state subsidy from the bonds that we're refinancing to get a better interest rate and to enjoy some savings on that were approved at a prior meeting.
That's correct, but I'd also note that the state stopped supplying that subsidy a few years ago and has not picked the ball back up yet, so we're-
For new projects.
Right.
And the bond refinancing saved us a million dollars?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, I'll accept a motion to approve the acquisition of three 2020 propane-powered, 72-passenger school buses with three-point seat belts at a unit cost of $310,716. One 2019 nine-passenger school van at a cost of $39,650, for a total cost of $350,366 through M.A. Brightbell Body Works Incorporated using National Joint Powers Alliance pricing, NJPA.
Moved. Second.
Can I say that three times fast?
One more time, I didn't hear you.
Did we have a motion and a second? We got, any-
I have a comment. Just based on the notes here. So we're, we are gonna apply for a grant for approximately $15,000 per school bus, which would help offset the cost. And we also ride these buses as long as we can. So the three we're trading in are all from 2004, ranging in mileage from 163,000 to 140,000 per bus. So we, we work them hard.
And I, I did my own little research on the benefits of propane versus diesel buses and learned for myself that in addition to fuel savings and having a fuel source that is generated in Pennsylvania, and the propane, there is a significant reduction in greenhouse gases and pollution for the broader environment, but also for the kids standing at a bus stop and not having to breathe in those emissions that could affect asthma and other things. They are quieter to operate, which is a benefit for the safety of the bus environment and the driver's attention and the kids' experience on the bus. They're better in the winter. They don't need to have the time to idle and warm up, and they don't need the kind of supplemental oils and, and things like that to help the motors run, and they're less costly to maintain, and they're more reliable. So kudos on making a energy and environmentally responsible bus purchase. It sounds like that's a growing movement, but certainly not the, the dominant form of school transportation.
As our bus director, he's moved us in that direction.
For us, well, when he does the state of the fleet, we'll find out exactly how many we have now, but it's gotta be close to 10.
Yeah, we're actually moving our budget for pro, from diesel fuel to propane now.
The other benefit of propane is that you can cook hot dogs with it, which I don't think you'd wanna do with diesel. Is, is this a lease?
This is a lease. This is just the acquisition of the buses, and then in May, we'll do a lease that'll pay for it over five years. And we do it in May because the buses won't arrive until July, and we need to have the lease set up so that the proceeds come at the same time that the buses arrive, so we can pay the bill at the, you know, so the money's there to pay the bill. But, yeah, it's a, it's a five-year lease, and there's buses, leases that are coming off the books that'll make room for these, so it'll actually not increase that line item, so.
Does it impact our borrowing at all for next year?
It does. It, but our last bond issue was only 9.3 million, because we do leases every year for buses and for, for technology. So that, we do 10, 10 million dollars is the limit for bank-qualified borrowings, which we do, and so this would reduce the 10 million down, the amount of this lease. So, so we'll probably be borrowing about 9.4 million for our, our, you know, our Linwood project again this year instead of 10.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, I'll accept a motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the Kelly Music for Life Incorporated Tax Assessment Appeal pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, Number 2017-10357, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Moved. Seconded.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution supporting statewide cyber charter school funding reform.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number 15, I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution supporting Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526 for school districts providing their own cyber learning programs.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much again. Item number 16, I'll accept a motion to approve the following E-Rate Eligible Purchase Agreement contracts. Can I just say as listed here? As listed.
Please do.
I'm tempted to read it, but, all, I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
Moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Are these upgrades, or?
All except the bottom are infrastructure upgrades, and that infrastructure is eligible for E-Rate and also internet. So the bottom, as you can see Comcast internet is, and we get 40%, so off the cost there. So we're saving $145,000.
Is that after they mark it up 40%?
Probably.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Before we move on, I just wanna, as I'm scrolling through the business agenda, we have a check listing, which is typically an agenda item, but isn't, did we, does that need to be approved? Usually you do the checks number this to this.
Do.
Remember last month, we kinda, to kinda consolidate the check registers, we put, because we're gonna have Linwood checks, and we're gonna have food service, and we're gonna have, soon we'll have high school renovation checks, and also capital projects. We're just showing approval of the total on here, but the detail with the check register listing is in the back here. If you wanna look at the detail- listing is in the back here, if you wanna look at the detail.
So the, the general fund in number eight included all of the checks?
Yes. So the details there in the back, the total that you're proving is in the front, yeah.
It's all general fund, okay.
It's all general, general fund checking.
Did we do the ACH payments?
Thank you for asking.
Did we do the ACH payments? Or is that all rolled into this? It's all together? Got it.
Item number 17, superintendent's report. Dr. Roushi?
I ask you to approve the retirements that are listed in item 1A and 1B.
Moved.
Second.
We moved in seconded.
It was us.
Any discussion?
I would like to, I knew all of them, of course. It's embarrassing to give, keep giving my age. But, for example, Marcia Core, who is a well-loved music teacher in the high school, when I became principal of Linwood, she actually taught first grade music at Linwood. So she would go from the first grade doing do, 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 up into the wonderful, talented high school, and it was wonderful. Dr. Gordy, of course, worked at Linwood with me for 15 years. Suzanne Stein was also the art teacher. She started at Linwood, as her mom did, and then moved on up to the middle school, I don't know why. Because it's middle school, but she did. Kathy Truman, I can't talk about how much Kathy Truman helped me significantly with all of the children that we got, brand-new in our schools that didn't understand our language. She was a wonderful help. And Cindy Weisman and I started together at Cooper Town a million years ago. So I congratulate each and every one of these wonderful, wonderful teachers that we've, lucky enough, our kids were lucky enough to have. Congratulations to them all.
Susan, if Ray Wamsley drove the bus at Linwood, you'd have the whole.
And, I do know, I was waiting for that, but hey. I know, yep, and he was great with the kids. There you go.
I, I was also thinking, my children had all three of the teachers, Ms. Core, Dr. Gordy, and Ms. Stein, and they all had a big impact on their development, and it's just a, it's, you know, time passes, we get new teachers, good things, but those were three really important teachers, and I wanna thank them for all they did for the district.
Anybody else? Certainly like to thank all of these folks for their longtime service. Did we have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask you to accept the resignations that are noted in item 2.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask you to approve the appointments that are listed in item 3A through 3C.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask you to approve, approve the leaves of absence in, as described in items 4A through 4D.
Moved. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, I ask you to approve the education excursions in item 5.
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got to stop talking now. I hope you feel better. Board report. Mr. Sinto?
The PSBA is asking us to review their 2019 legislative platform. I can send a link to that so that everyone's aware, and then they're gonna be accepting proposals to that. There's a meeting that I'll be attending for the Platform Committee on July 27th. So as we near that, you know, we can talk further about what some items might be for us in terms of communicating that, and then the, that's adopted, I believe, in October. So there's time as we go, but I'll, I'll send that out to everybody, so you can take a look at what's there currently, and if we wanna make any changes or suggestions or what.
So I had the pleasure and honor of attending the Evening of Jazz last week, last Friday, with my family, and, Mr. Sinto, you're so humble, you didn't mention that your son played.
Yes.
Fabulous job.
He is moving his way up in the world of Havreford music, so, having a great time doing it.
But I was just blown away by the, all the kids who just got up and did their students' solos, and like, they were having a great time. There was a lot of energy in the rooms, a lot of fun, so just thank you to everyone who had something to do with that, to the students, the teachers, and community members who helped organize that event. Also, I wanted to thank the different perspectives we heard tonight on neurodiversity, and this is all just, you know, thinking about Autism Awareness Month, and thinking about the perspectives of people with autism, and how important it is that we, we hear from people who are living with autism, and that they're not, not to think about them as puzzles to be solved, and allow them to really identify themselves. I mean, some of, some of the reading I did this week, I learned that light it up blue, blue was actually chosen because typically, or I guess statistically, boys tend to have autism more than girls do, so, you know, there's like a gender choice there. So does that leave out girls from, from that discussion when we talk about lighting things up blue? I actually have had the opportunity to hear Nadine Silver speak a few months back, maybe even last year, and it's, it's just, it's really, it's powerful to hear from people. And for us to not be thinking of our children with autism, or autistic children, as puzzle pieces to be solved, because, you know, they are neurodiverse and they're living in a neurotypical world. So it's really up to us to not impose, you know, neurotypicalness on them and allow them to be who they are, and support them in their own journeys as autistic people.
Thanks. Bridgette?
I'll just mention for the, or the facility liaisons met before tonight's meeting and learned about the bid process for the Linwood project, and some of the budget impacts that has, and, and some of the options that we might be able to add or value engineer from the project, and so look forward to hearing how that process develops, and, and in the next month be having, hopefully, bids to award and a contract for that project.
Thank you. Kim?
No joke.
Joe?
No report.
Oh, I was just gonna say, thank you to the high school for the college road trip, college field trip. I just think it's a great opportunity for all the students, and they really had a wide range of colleges to choose from, and it's just, it's just really a great time to have students start thinking about their college selection process, so, nice job.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. This was Reading Olympics Week. I wanna congratulate all of our students who participated, and thank all of the staff and administration who volunteered their time after hours to support and promote reading in our schools and throughout Delaware County. Last night was my board meeting at the Delaware County Community College for the sponsoring school districts, which was, as always, very fun. We got to tour the campus, really impressive buildings all around. It's not just an, a place where students go to get educated, they go to learn real skills to propel them beyond college, whether it's two or four years. We set a date for our next board appreciation dinner, you'll hear more about that, but mark your calendars for October 30th, it's going to be spooktacular. I requested that we do a dress-up, my daughter is born on Halloween. Just kidding. We got some other materials pertaining to budget, and we're gonna talk more about that later, but the highlights are 1% increase for the sponsoring school districts, so not huge. Tuition is gonna go up, just over 4%, $8. Enrollment is up. They taught us last night that community college, two-year institution enrollment runs opposite of the economy, so when the economy's really good, tuition, I'm sorry, enrollment goes down. And then when the economy goes down, two-year schools, community college enrollment goes up, because it become a very affordable place. Interestingly enough, we're in a, a good economy, but their tuition, enrollment is still going strong, and that's all from the community college.
Thank you. Alyssa?
No report.
Susan?
Well, first, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Hurri, and I didn't mean, and to all the students and teachers in the middle school, I love middle school, I just have such an elementary brain. Can't imagine why anybody would leave Linwood, so I apologize to you, and everyone there, make sure they know. And also, at the IU last night, we were talking about legislative stuff, I'll still, just a tiny bit, I don't know if you noticed, sorry, but there's, someone's trying to change the name from the Vocational Tech School, VOTech School, to Career Training, Career Technical Training, trying to, I think, make it more appealing. Hopefully, I don't know whether it'll work or not, I thought it was interesting, we had a great discussion about it, no one really felt either way about it. I mean, for us, I guess VOTech is always what it was, and a vocation is your career. However, they'd like to change the language, so, all I ever wanna do is encourage kids to get out there and, and help us fix cars and do all those wonderful things, if that's what they wanna do, and be proud of it. Thanks there.
Yep. On the legislative side, a couple weeks ago, I attended the, a meeting of County-Wide Advocacy Committee at the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. The primary topic there was cyber charter funding reform, and there's been some follow-up there, some of those folks in the interim have reached out to their legislators and convinced them to cosponsor legislation, so it was time well spent. Last Friday, I attended the annual Legislative Breakfast at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. There were about 120 people in the room, very well-attended, very good program. Again, the topic was cyber charter funding reform. This past beautiful sunny weekend, if I remember correctly, I spent in the bowels of the Pennsylvania Convention Center with about 5,000 other school board members from all over the country for the National School Boards Association's Annual Conference. It was a, certainly a great opportunity for networking, and I don't know that I would, I've never gone to the national conference before, because it generally involved getting on a plane and spending money in hotels, and this one, the transportation and lodging costs were nonexistent, so... On May 17th, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit will be holding our annual Legislative Breakfast, and all board members in the county are invited, and guess what the topic's gonna be?
Cyber.
So, if you can make it, that's, that's usually a, a good event also. The board met in executive session prior to the public meeting to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, retirements, and leaves of absence. The board also reviewed tax assessment appeal litigation, and with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved. Seconded.
Thanks, everybody.